First, do you call the vote to say a form?
This voter, President. Mr. Dallin.
Here.
Mr. Cope.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Scott Strini.
Here.
You and Mr. Robinson.
Here.
All that question.
All right, please rise if you're able for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the re-. For which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice.
Now, before we get started, this isn't on the agenda, but I'd like to make a proclamation at the beginning of the meeting. The proclamation just came through today, so we don't necessarily need to have a proclamation on the agenda, but I do want to ask the board if they're okay with me doing it. Yes, okay, because I can do it under new business if you like. All right, all right. Yeah.
So we can make an.
So we can make a. Yeah, it's based on the subject matter, anyway. Do we have anyone sign up to speak this evening, Miss Line?
We do not.
Oh, all right, what do you mean, by the way? All right, before you, you have the meeting minutes from October seventeen, twenty twenty four. Please review them at this time, and then after the approval of the minutes or denial of the minutes, I should say, was the minutes vote, I will make the proclamation.
Just want to say thank you for including that the sweeper has been repaid. Means a lot to me.
Any other questions or comments about the minutes? I'll undertake a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So my.
They got it. Questions, comments? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, so I learned yesterday that November is Children's Grief Awareness Month, and I heard that the state of Illinois made this proclamation. So I've reached out to Fox Valley Hands of Hope, which is an organization that specializes in helping children, for the copy of the proclamation that was made by the state, and I had this quick change it here, and I'd like to make it for the village of Hampshire. It says, whereas one in twelve children in Illinois will experience death of a parent or sibling by age eighteen, and whereas grieving is a process, not an event, children must be allowed to grieve in their own way and at their own pace. And whereas within each family who is grieving, parents and caregivers should show children that while emotions of grief can be intensely painful, they are acceptable and normal and should not be feared of. Whereas supporting children in their grief is an investment in their long-term health and well-being of both the child and the wider community. And whereas Fox Valley Hands of Hope can help children who are grieving feel less alone and more supported through changing the culture surrounding children in grief. Now, therefore, I, Mike Reed Jr., the president of Hampshire, do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty four as Children's Grief Awareness Month. So I thought that that's important, and I know that we've had a lot of families in town where kids have kind of fallen through the cracks, and so I thought I would bring awareness to it. So thank you for that indulgence this evening. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda here. As, as you know, Chairman Maroc has resigned the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we needed someone with municipal background, planning and zoning experience, to kind of step into the big shoes of Brian Maroc. And so, well, I guess he really does have big shoes, specifically and appropriately here. So, but I begged trust, former trustee Klein to come out of retirement to help lead this ship that we have, because as we all know, the Planning and Zoning Commission is pretty important to the operations of our village. And so in the packet, you guys should have all of the information pertaining to Ms. Klein and her vast experience, and she's here to be fired upon by the board with millions of questions.
Chair.
So necessary. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Klein?
I don't fit Brian Maroc's shoes. That was my only question.
She's been, she's been great. She was great as a trustee, and she's been a great resource for us in, in the village. As it comes to development in general, we're honored a lot. So I will undertake a motion to appoint Ms. Christine Klein as chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission through May twenty twenty six, which is the remainder of former Chairman Maroc's term.
So.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, thank you. As you know, Mr. Rappich also resigned due to him moving out of the community, I believe. And there was another vacancy on planning and zoning. And so before you this evening, we have Mr. Ron Ross. He is right here in the audience. He's got a background in construction. He currently serves on the HOA up in Lakewood. And so we thought that we'd present Mr. Ross for appointment tonight as well to the Planning and Zoning Commission through, to complete the remainder of Mr. Rappich's term, which is May of twenty eighth. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ron Ross? Okay, awesome. I will undertake a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Ross as commissioner to the Planning and Zoning Commission through May of twenty eighth.
So.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, thank you, more than passes. Okay, so that's, that's it. So you can, you're welcome to stay and watch this all go down, but you're going to have to stay if you found the plans. I know you said you had to go. Today. Okay, awesome. All right, thank you very much, both of you, green disturb alongside us in this. It's really important. It's really an important job, so we'll get you up to speed quick. Good evening, Mr. Hedges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you. With that, we would ask the consideration of an ordinance approving a variance for two hundred Redhoff Drive to permit a shed and an easement. This starts on page eighteen of your packet, Mr. Khan will explain it to you.
Good evening. Similar to a request that came in from the village, I think, a month or two months ago, about a shed being placed easement because there was an oversight on our part. This is the same situation where the slab was approved without a zoning review back in twenty twenty one. Now, the homeowners wanted to put the shed on that slab. That was a mistake, again, done by the village because we were not reviewing for zoning compliance permits. We are reviewing them now, so we should not have this situation moving forward. Planning Zone Commission has a public hearing on this matter on October twenty eighth and recommend the approval by Board of forty zero. Findings of facts summarized in staff agenda supplement showing that it was an error by the village and not a condition created by the homeowner, the property owner. To cut off a question, we did not charge any fees to the homeowner because this was a mistake on our part again. But if you have any other questions, I can answer them.
I do. How many more of these?
You could read our mind.
That was a hard question. I mean, honestly, I mean, it's.
I'm doing an audit.
Okay.
I'm not through all the years from, I started twenty twenty when we started with Safeville. I'm doing an audit. I haven't come across any, I have two more years to go.
Okay.
Twenty twenty three and then twenty twenty four, but I haven't come across any more. So hopefully we caught them.
Just a general question, not specific to this property, but now that the second one in your auditing warrant, usually if there's a variance to allow something within an easement, the owner is doing such understanding that if there needs to be access to that easement, that they're responsible for the moving or the rebuild or whatever has to happen. Was that the understanding when these concrete slabs were put in? And the reason why I ask that is while this variance may, may have that understanding, if it's put where the concrete slab was originally done without indication of an easement, are they still going to be held responsible if somebody has to access that when they were allowed to put it within it?
Yeah, so as part of the process, they've signed over waiver liability. I believe that's in your packet, so that's understanding that if.
So everyone that's going to go through this through your audit would have to sign that waiver of liability?
Yeah, if they want to get a variance, we're recommending that they do it.
And Justice Kelly, there shouldn't be many of these. The only way they happen is if they built the slab and then delayed the shed. Because if they had the shed the same year, they would have the same mistake twice.
Yes.
Okay, so it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be many more. So maybe nothing, maybe no more.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, just to follow up to Justice Kelly, is that the same waiver that we overturned prior?
Correct.
President two times? Okay, nothing.
You really changed the address to name.
Do you have one more question, Trustee?
Just concerning, I mean, in the packet, it states that the reason that it wasn't done was they couldn't find a contractor.
What was that, sorry?
The reason why, I mean, this was from, what, two and a half years ago?
The reason why they didn't build the building right away.
Was that they couldn't find a contractor for two and a half years?
I get it. I know that I've got a lot of unfinished projects at home myself.
Good for.
Does anyone have any other questions? All right, I would undertake a motion to approve the variance.
I'll make the motion.
Questions or comments? I do, I just would like to apologize for the trouble this has caused. Thanks for working on that.
That's okay, thank you, I appreciate it. And the reason that we couldn't find a contractor for two and a half years is we've had two that didn't work out.
It's not that funny.
All right, no other questions or comments? I need, this is sounding change, so we need to do a roll call, please, so roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cope?
Aye.
Scott Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Foder?
Aye.
Motion passes zero.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't need to stick around if you don't want to.
All right, I'll be right back.
At this time, we schedule a discussion regarding a renewal of aggregation program for the electrical load in Hampshire. Some of you recall that we did this, I believe, from twenty twenty, twenty twelve to twenty twenty one. With us tonight is Sharon Derling, the president of Illinois. In your packet, on page eighteen, excuse me, on page thirty four, is there a memorandum to you? And with that, I'd like to introduce Sharon to through that briefly, and no actions being requested tonight since I wasn't sure where the vote would be on this topic. But we do need to get an indication tonight so that we can pass the ordinances and all if you do want to proceed before the, before the January tenth.
Yes.
Good evening, it's good to see you again.
President, good to see you and trustees, I also recognize a few of you. Yeah, it's this, twenty eleven that I first came here for the public hearings, and you did very well in your four bearers who are here before you. I think at one point, the average resident saved, accumulated four hundred dollars on their power bill. So that was great work that you did back then, and that's with no change in service, just still get the electricity, same thing, but lower cost because of the deregulation that was established by Governor Quinn, I think it was, a long time ago. So in around twenty eighteen, we were unable to really receive bids that would save money. You had a program that went on three years, so your last one was suspended in twenty twenty one. To date, I don't think there's any community in ComEd territory that is able to get rates below ComEd. ComEd rate today is super low, six point four seven cents per kilowatt hour. Last month, it was lowest it's been in fourteen years. I'd like to say that with my voice raised, because what's been lowest in fourteen years? You know, not much. So what we established starting in twenty eighteen, and probably a couple million people across sixty communities have enrolled in a ComEd price match program, whereas wherein ratepayers are enrolled and they pay exactly the ComEd rate, not a penny more, not a penny less. And you ask, why do that? The benefit is we can bring one of two options, green energy to the community, or you might even bring it more locally, the supplier will offer the village a civic contribution. How they're able to do that is some ratepayers remain with ComEd, some move to the supplier, and they work with the ones that are cheaper to serve. But importantly, the residents get to choose, that's the law. They can choose, you know, but generally they'll just stay where they're received an opt-out notice that suggests, which, did you raise your hand?
No.
Oh, okay, stretching. So I'm just, you know, giving a very brief summary of it, but there's one supplier that's offering that program now. You could receive for a two-year term of thirty five thousand dollar civic contribution. There are no stipulations as to how you use it. So you could do that, or you could just choose green energy. Some communities take the green energy. Oak Park, they're kind of known for being extra green, I'll say it that way. But they take the funds to put towards their own local initiatives. You could use it for, you know, any purpose, general budget, maybe a little green of a park or whatever. So that's the short of it, but I left a lot out, but.
Sharon, there's one thing, the fourteen percent, I think, is important.
Thank you. So we did get a list, thank you, Mr. Hedges, from ComEd. And we were shocked, I was very surprised to discover that fourteen percent of your residents are currently enrolled with alternative suppliers. Today, I checked the ICC list of suppliers. There are no rates close to as low as a ComEd rate. Probably ninety nine point nine percent of, that's fourteen percent of your community are paying too high. Part of these programs is when they get a letter in the mail talking about the program, people tend to get off their ComEd bill to kind of check and see what's happening. And for people paying as high, it kind of breaks my heart. Ten, fifteen, twenty, ComEd told me someone at thirty five cents per kilowatt hour. The program just helps to bring awareness, and they get the opt-outs notice, like, oh, by the way, what were we paying? That's, it's, yeah, that's not, not good.
That's the most significant thing, I think, that's different from two years ago, when, two or three years ago.
Yes.
Last time, I think it was a consensus of the board that it wasn't worth, to just get a grant for thirty, in this case, thirty five thousand dollars. It wasn't worth the trouble that the residents would go to have to get a letter in the mail. What we know, though, is that those people are knocking on their doors anyway and sending them letters anyway. And, and the fourteen percent of our residents, that's a significant number of people, they pay as much as thirty cents per kilowatt. That's why I thought it was worth bringing it back to you.
Yeah.
So can you explain, does everybody understand how this, this process works, thirty thousand foot overview wise? If we, if we were to go with an aggregator, a village-wide aggregate program, or can you give us thirty thousand foot overview?
Can I give you the what?
The thirty thousand foot overview of how this would work. Should, say, say we, say we decide to do this.
Sure.
What's the process like for us and what does it look like for our residents?
We do get competitive bids, this is, of course, of due diligence. Today, I checked the suppliers' rates, we're like nine and eleven cents, so that's kind of an easy no, not recommended. Then, just as in your past programs, ratepayer, all residents receive a notice, and it's, you know, village letterhead, so it's approved by the village, whoever approves that. And it just announces the program. Some folks will stay with ComEd, they need do nothing, some folks will be switched. And a lot of your residents, by now, ten years in, they were kind of remembering getting these notices. I spoke with your former clerk, and she said there were fewer calls because we were kind of accustomed to getting those notices. And again, it's a little different in the, how are we able to get that, that civic funds or the fund for green energy is? Every account uses electricity differently, and it has to do with the volume you use at peak demand times. So you get two identical homes, and depending on when and how they use electricity, it's not good or bad, or they use too much or too little. But the tiny is one is really cheap to serve, the other is costlier to serve. The costlier to serve, remain at ComEd, the cheaper to serve, enroll at MC Square. And we've done this with many neighboring communities from Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, what's near here, Round Lake Beach, or, you know, Kankakee County. I manage the program for all of unincorporated portions of Kankakee County under both the former and current administrator.
I remember at the time, trustee Kelly, not, I just, I remember that you were the last one opposed to doing an aggregation program because it seemed like we were giving all of our residents information to another company to manage, and we were doing it like, because they were giving us a check. You remember that part of the discussion?
I don't know if I'd say I was, but that was one of my objections, yes.
So, I mean, that, so do you still have the, the same feelings today, even with the fourteen percent?
I have some questions, but we can continue on, I'm not the only person on the board.
Well, I, no, I, I just.
I know.
I wasn't, I wasn't saying that you have to be.
I will have, I will have some questions.
I just, I want to make sure that we have those questions because I remember.
A hundred percent, I understand.
So does anyone have any questions for Ms. Derling? Or how would you guys like to handle the discussion? Would you like to question Ms. Derling? Would you like to have a discussion off the board? Sure, Sharon.
I, I have a question, just because I decided to research it like right now. And it, one of the things that it says is the reason, sorry, you may be charged based on the usage of everyone in the group as opposed to your individual usage, but it's a share. So is that how your company works?
No.
Okay.
I don't quite understand what that is as a share, but ComEd, ComEd socializes the rate for all. Otherwise, we can't have two million different rates and, you know.
Right.
So they socialize the rate, so that ComEd rate is precisely what is charged by the supplier in the ComEd price match program.
And it's by unit, right? So it's by unit, like however many kilowatt hours you.
Yeah, exactly, as you're charged today.
Okay.
And it would be the same price. Six hundred kilowatt hours per this month, then you're charged, you know, a price.
Okay.
And I'm happy to intervene, if I may, a question about privacy or information, would you?
One of my questions I was going to have is, does the aggregator that is, or I should say, alternative retail electric supplier, are, do they have access to our residents' names, information, and addresses through other means than if they were to get it through?
No.
So they would only get that data we handed it?
Yes. They are required, and I am required, I actually have that data now, so we were able to analyze and come up that there were fourteen. Mr. Hedges signed a document, and he signed saying that, you know, the village would only use it for those purposes. That's a document he signed. I am licensed with the Illinois Commerce Commission, and they're sort of the policing body for me. And I can't and don't and never have, and I've worked for, with twelve, two million total residents across the last thirteen, fourteen years, and then we discard the data, we don't do anything with it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a total analysis to a lot of residents, and so our usage varies throughout the seasons and all kinds of things. Is it based on the metering, or is it based on some sort of like average usage, or how is that?
ComEd price is one price, and it changes a little bit every month. So ComEd, that's the price, and that's the price the supplier would charge. So if you use a thousand kilowatt hours or a hundred kilowatt hours, it's always that ComEd price. ComEd price has a price, it's, I mentioned here, six forty seven cents per kilowatt hour. You'll never see exactly six forty seven percent per kilowatt hour because there's a little variance. It's sort of a true-up mechanism that they do called the purchased electricity adjustment, because they have to buy in massive blocks every spring, and they don't know, you know, it's going to be hot, cold, or people are going to use a lot, or are going to use a little bit. So they have to true-up how much they, they don't make any money on it, it's zero for them. It's just a hundred percent passive for ComEd, but they have to true-up. So it does vary a little bit, that's why I said last month, there was a true-up where everybody got over a one point seven cents credit back, which ends up being a lot of money, which dropped the rate to like four and a half cents, which is why I'm saying I think it's cool because it's lower than I've ever seen in my lifetime. And maybe overtop that, but it's exactly the ComEd rate, and that ComEd rate trades within this range till May of next year. Then they'll reset it, they reset it every year.
Sorry, not the rate, but is it the, based on the metered usage?
Doesn't matter how much you use, you pay that rate. So if it's six point four seven cents per kilowatt hour, use a hundred kilowatt hours, that's on top of what I'm saying, six dollars.
So if I used a hundred, he used a hundred and ten.
Exact same rate.
Okay, okay. Okay, and thank you, trustee Cope, for having me.
Bills you get where you're in relation with your neighbors, I'm at the top all the time.
What we're talking neighbor, because.
I've never met anybody at the bottom of that list.
I was going to say, I don't think anybody has.
You're always.
So, do you also do the buyback on the energy when the panels are overproducing more than the rest of the house using?
So the ComEd rate is set, and there's not a, but this is, that's a different thing, you're talking about community solar or solar panels? Net metering, is that what you're talking about, buy it, buyback? Is that a moment term?
That metering is the right term.
Okay, so ComEd doesn't have, has net metering arrangements with specific individuals, but that has no impact on the rate that they set for everyone else. So they're, they only have about, I think, one or two percent solar generation that they use. So that's also baked into that socialized rate. One for all, all for one, or?
That's three missing gears, but it works, so.
No one would pay a different rate with this program, everyone would pay the exact same rate. Which, the goodness is, it's a little bit lower right now, but it can change.
I don't have a problem with, with the green energy, I think it's a good thing. We've signed as a village a pledge, I think, what, was it King County or was it?
The.
ComEd in the state.
ComEd in the state, we signed a pledge for green, green energy and to be responsible in that way. So this is a no reflection of that. I think my, I have one more question, then I'll share what I was about to say. The original aggregation was in two thousand twelve, I think you said?
Yes.
And then when did that stop?
Twenty twenty one, nine years, ten years later.
So ten years later, and. I mean, before twelve, everyone was ComEd.
Yes.
Okay, so is it safe to say that those that signed up in twenty twelve or at some point are that four, are that fourteen percent of overpayment as a result of people signing up for that? Because those rates are now higher.
With other, with other aggregators, though, at higher rates.
I, I'm not saying this aggregator, this is no, in no respect of who is being discussed or green energy or any of that. I'm just saying, the village agreed to do aggregation, there were options presented to residents, they signed up, and because they signed up, they are now paying, fourteen percent are paying higher and some five times higher with the current ComEd ratings.
None of those remained with the contract, a hundred percent with your program were moved back to the ComEd again at the end of the contract as required by the contract.
Okay, so in twenty twenty one, all, everyone is back to ComEd?
Everyone who was in your electric aggregation program, a hundred percent of those were moved back to ComEd. But meanwhile, people knocked on your door and people made other choices. So there may have been, you know, one or two percent.
So it's not because of the twenty twelve?
Correct.
And today, we don't have an aggregation agreement, anybody can sign it with, if this company or any other company comes, you can sign it with whoever you want.
And they still could, trustee Kelly, even if we send them, if we agree to go with an aggregator, well, they'll get a letter from us, but they'll still get knocked on their door by other people, so they could still sign up with another aggregator that shows to.
And so then it's always, the difference with that is, and, and it's gotten better, but back in the day, they used to say they were with the village, or they're working within the village and all this. But when we send them a letter, it comes on, like, if we were to do this, it comes with our letterhead, we push it through our social media channels and communicate it in the newsletter and that kind of stuff, that this is the company that we're going with as a village, and here's the reasons why. And if you choose to sign up with another company, that's on you, you could still do that, but that's worth, but it's an education, I don't want to say problem, but it becomes an education challenge for us to communicate it to our residents that this is our company, and, and you should sign up with no one else because you're not going to get the rates that you're getting, et cetera, et cetera.
Gotcha, okay, so then, when a village does the aggregation, whether twenty twelve or no, and there's usually a company that is a part of that, correct? Like you check bids, you look at different programs, and you make, you and your organization makes, you just have to be here the whole time? The suggestion on who to go with?
Yes, actually, we'd bring it to the board, but right now, there's just one option.
So then, as a part of that, so for this supplier, or whoever the previous supplier was, do we, do we as a village get information on where the energy is being produced, the percentage that's green, and whether it's solar or wind, or where it comes from? Like, do we get reports that back up that it's green energy?
Where it's coming from. The energy that comes from the supplier is exactly the same that ComEd produces, unless you chose a green program. And ComEd reports every quarter, it's on my website, I don't get, but it's roughly then thirty percent green coal, thirty percent natural gas, thirty percent, why am I stumped? Let's see, thank you, and only the nuclear is increasing, it's crept up, thank you so much, in the direction of forty, forty percent, would you, you know, and, and that the actual, we're not meeting the goals that were set by the state in Springfield, and I don't know why, but they're not able, well, there are a few reasons that that gets deep into why.
No, I understand that, so, but if we went with, if, if the village, the board, the majority of the board felt that this was a good program and this is what we should do, I, I want to make sure I understand clearly, you're saying the energy from that supplier is the same as what we would get from ComEd?
Yes, it would be the same, they buy in the same bucket, so it would be the same, if it's forty percent now, nuclear, same coal, same nuclear.
So how does going with this?
That's fancy, you don't use the green program. What happens if we do opt for the green program?
Then it would be just five percent is all that they're able. Then it would be just um, five percent is all that they're able to get, it's gotten really expensive, very difficult to achieve. But if you were to get five percent, EPA loves that, it's the highest quality and they, it'd be EPA green power.
So five percent of our energy would be considered green?
Consumed across the entire community, including all your commercial, which isn't a part of this program.
Okay, so if, if, if we did this as a community, we would be saying that we're doing this and it's transitioning us from zero? Or whatever the percentage ComEd is to five percent? Okay. What happens after the two-year term?
Then your contract expires and I come back and chat with you again about other opportunities or it, you, the contract expires and everyone is automatically pushed back to ComEd per the contract.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the twelve hundred a month for the village and more about the residents, like so after the two years, the residents are automatically put back to ComEd?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you extend for another.
Do you have more?
No, please.
If, if we choose to go with this, you mentioned this will go out on social media in water bills, what does the resident have to do? Or does the resident do nothing and they're already enrolled, or what is the, what is the process like for the resident?
To my recollection, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a letter goes out that says that the village is enrolled in an aggregation program, looks like an official letter. And the only thing they have to do is opt out if they don't wanna be a part of it. Because they're gonna be a part of it no matter what, unless they opt out or go with another company.
So no one from your organization is gonna come knocking on doors saying you need to opt into this?
No, I have other things to do besides not.
Well, that, that's a lot of the confusion that residents have, because somebody's coming knocking on my door saying I'm with so-and-so and I see you up in this program and.
Which trustee Robinson, is why I've added at the bottom of these letters now, a note that says, should someone come to your door claiming to be from the village or ComEd, you know, they're not legitimate, so that's actually in the letter, and people need take no action, they can toss it and they won't notice any difference in their bills.
Thank you.
Now, just so I can, another question for staff, right now, we go through this whole they gotta register situation. We can't restrict them from registering and getting a badge if they're an aggregator, right?
They have a leak, well, I, I'll defer to it to the.
Because we have chosen company? We can't, we can't say, no, you can't be here.
Well, if we choose them and allow them to partake in this.
No, 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 I'm saying, like, it's, so like, we, we have these guys here, right? And then like another company comes, registers at the village to knock our doors, we can't tell them no, because they're already other company. And we can't make their badges special, like, don't you lose that? Um, I have not.
We signed a logo on their badge.
I have not researched that point, Mr. President, but I'm gonna assume no.
Fair enough. So I have not researched my energy aggregate companies. Is there a better option out there?
Thank you for asking, right now there are only two suppliers that serve ComEd territory, it's shocking. I've worked with twelve, so there have been twelve, but as time goes past and the whole market goes tours, we've fallen off to just two, even Constellation, I still work with them, I get busy with them, but they don't supply anybody. Constellation, you all know, you know, our home people, um, so there's two suppliers, one is in Downstate Illinois, Dynasty Energy. They won't offer this ComEd price match, which a lot of communities love, and I have communities just extending their extension, one, two, three, four, five, you know, can, can extend year after year, they like that, I've only got MC squared, there's another company that used to do it, they're gone, I just have one. Love to have more, and I've talked to Dynasty about trying to implement this program, I keep talking to them, but we've got two.
So it would be not a smart idea when someone comes knocking on my door to sign an agreement with a different company?
I encourage.
It would be smarter to go with this as a village resident.
Uh, that'd be my personal opinion, I, I'd read the fine print, see if there's anything extra added monthly fees, they might say, oh, we can get, oh, you know, six point four seven, we can get you five cents, while maybe there's a twenty-five dollar added fee, you're seeing something in there. I haven't seen anything better, no.
And I only ask because I know this is confusing for a lot of people when these people come knocking on doors, this is, they say it's gonna be cheaper than what we already do, so should, like, so our, like, residents be absolutely clear they don't have to do anything if the village approves this and no one from your entity come knocking on their door.
And the suppliers do not, they will not, and they don't.
So if the village approves this, are we gonna get a different statement or will it still be from ComEd?
It's still from ComEd, by law, only ComEd does billing, what's different is flip the bill over on the backside, one line is different. It says MC squared, you're support.
But you're paying ComEd?
Yes, always ComEd.
These are like on the bill, a current bill at the moment, if you're not with ComEd, you have a third-party supplier.
Correct.
And that's what you, where you're saying you would see.
Correct.
One of the things, I, I'm a solar consultant and I've been doing that for about five years and something I'm just bringing up here, may have nothing to do with this whatsoever, but, uh, when some people have tried to go solo and they are with a third party other than ComEd, they run into issues with, with being able to go solo, because there's some sort of alignment there that doesn't allow
Yes.
The prop, the parties to work together.
I'm very aware of that.
What I'm asking here is if somebody is gonna shift to another alignment for a, a third party, whatever you like to call it, uh, are they gonna run into an issue if somebody decided they wanna go solo?
Yeah, two things, ComEd is fix that, it was a terrible problem when I worked hard to help people wrangle themselves on that. Two, we never enroll people on net metering, solar supply. They just are not, they are sent a letter saying you can participate if you want to, but they are not automatically enrolled, we never do that. ComEd's fixed it, so you don't, I don't know what you're talking about, when you did that, that doesn't happen anymore, they changed it, so you, you can switch between it. You don't lose the bank that you have of your net metered credits.
Oh, okay, that, that's what I'm asking, also another issue is, uh, recently uh, ComEd and other utility organizations have changed what they do with net metering. And you no longer, anybody that goes solo now will no longer get a net metering credit for going solo.
That's crazy.
It, it is. For some people, that's forty percent of their bill. So the solar companies are working on how to get past this.
Yeah, I know that, I think that takes effect on January first, it shocked me.
Yeah, yeah, it's already in place with ComEd, uh, we can't enroll anybody now in that net metering program. It's just as of a month ago.
Fortunately, we keep all the net metering out, so there's no, you know.
Yeah, so I, I'm just bringing that up.
I'm glad you did, because it was about four years ago.
A, and so, so my concern is, like I said, there was if somebody switches to this other program other than ComEd, they gotta run into an issue in going solo.
Not now, they would have four years ago, but ComEd is, has kind of made some reparations on that and I'm really glad, it used to be you'd lose your bank, but that doesn't happen. They fix those things. Painful to get that, I think, but, yeah. One thing I would just say is, uh, we get a lot of, of interest from senior citizens, they're kind of glad, they're glad, you know, the village is doing this for me, so I don't have to try to figure out, and they have more confidence in their local leaders than the guys back at the door, so that's one thing we've heard people like about it, appreciate it.
Um, can you, I don't know a lot about the, the green power partnership that's listed in the
Yeah.
Brief, and so I looked up some things and, and I did research it a little bit, a lot of corporations and, and municipalities and Countryside Illinois is one of them that has this, but it's listed that they have it for their municipal complex because they have solar there and they generate one hundred and twenty-three, it was a hundred, one point eight percent, and twenty-four is eighty-two point three percent. So pretty high percentage of electric use comes from green energy. Is there a difference between the green power partnership that was talked about in this proposal and what when it's a municipality that has it because they are powering a municipal building or facilities with green energy?
Well, I hear, but what I am sure about is, um, our communities are in this, you know, there's different segments like university. Um, so we're in the municipal and we're talking, it's for the entire municipality, which is why uh, the EPA requires us to buy green energy, even for your commercial, you know, area, which is really getting larger, so that means we can buy more, cover that. So, but just for one building, yeah, that's a lot of thing you could do for your one building, it's probably a different, you know, category of their partnership.
Okay, so then, sorry, I'm just doing the math in my head real quick, um, you said about what, what, I, sorry, the fourteen percent was people overpaying, what percentage of a community normally goes over to aggregation?
Oh, um, how many people can opt out or?
Or does everybody automatically get enrolled into it?
No, for this program, roughly half people remain ComEd fifty percent, roughly the other fifty percent will be enrolled in the program. That's what makes it economically feasible for the supplier to, to serve you. And of those people who get opt-out notices, probably five percent choose not to participate. Because maybe they don't trust, you know, they don't know what it is and they just don't want.
Or if they don't read the opt-out, pitch it in the trash, then they're not opted out.
Correct.
Yeah, because they have to, they have to do something to opt out, it's not an opt-in.
Correct, and there's a lot of ways to opt out, you have QR code, you can call, you can email, you can, you can call me, I'll help, you know.
So the five percent clean energy uh, supply would apply to the five, to the fifty percent of those or whatever percentage ended up automatically being enrolled that did not opt out?
Thank you for asking, no, actually, we would purchase it for everyone, thank you, because I did make that clear. Purchase it for every single residence, every home, every business, insurance company next door, commercial, industrial, so even though they're not enrolled, it would be purchased for them, that's part of what the supplier says though, they will do for a village, is they will buy green for everybody.
And my last two questions, I promise.
Cool.
Uh, one is, just to make sure I'm clear, after the two years of this contract, everyone that was put in that did not opt out will receive a letter saying you are now being moved back to ComEd.
They will.
Okay, and two, after that two-year period, is the company that's in the aggregation able to continue to use the data that was given to them by the village to continue marketing and offering to those individuals?
They cannot and they may not.
Okay.
But that's in the contract, um, ten years ago, they tried to do that and wanted to have auto renewals and we said no, that's definitely in a contract.
After the two-year period, it's all.
Yeah, that would not be a good thing, but you're thinking about, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? We need to come up with some kind of consensus of what direction.
The question is, do you want us to bring you an ordinance back, uh, in a couple of weeks and to consider this, you don't have to commit to vote for it, but is there a consensus you'd like to consider at this point?
Trustee Co? Does matter to me. You have a direction of which way you'd like to see option one or option two? The, the thirty thou, I should say, our option three, the thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand or the green energy?
No, I have decided.
Okay. Trustee Bo.
I'm in the same boat, I need kind of sit on it.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
I have to say. So I, well, I guess the, the question is, is, what the question is, is do we have staff take time to prepare some kind of ordinance? Can you put the placeholder as far as the option goes for option A, B or C?
Oh yeah, you don't have to determine right now if you wanna do the green or the other, you can make.
We do that, when we, yeah.
The only question now is, do you want us to draft an ordinance and bring it back in two weeks? Or just?
Yeah, that, that's.
Is there a timing thing, it has to be done by the first of the year or?
I, ideally before January first. And we have a standard draft ordinance, it could be that we've done in the past, so I just change the dates, but, you know, it needs.
And just to be clear, the document says ten percent renewable energy for the green energy option to get the green power partner certification. And I know you were saying five percent is the ten percent.
I think you are correcting me, thank you so much, trustee Kelly.
Okay.
It was five percent and when I asked, thank you, I misspoke, when I asked them to put a five, a fine pencil on, I said, come back with your, with your best, and they doubled it.
So it's, so it was ten percent?
That is correct, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, I think the flavor of the board is to draft the ordinance and then let the board chew on the options and stuff, we'll have another discussion in a couple of weeks.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Be able to have the ordinance state that it would be after two years ended, like, would, would that be in the ordinance that after two years would be ended and there would be no further outreach to the community?
Well, I mean, there is the option that you could choose to, to, to consider another contract, depending what the rates are, and you wouldn't wanna.
The, the way that it's worked in the past is they would come to us before the contract is over and we would decide if we stay with them as the aggregator, and then no other communication would go out to the residents because we've chosen to stay with them. Or we break the contract with them and then they get a letter saying.
Contracts only for two years.
Right, understood.
The contracts from twenty eleven to twenty one, that wasn't just one ten-year contract, those renewals all the time. The board considered those throughout that ten years, so you'll be, you'll present up with a similar option two years from now.
Okay.
It might be better than comments rates because that's what it was before.
Right.
Or it might be worse, in which case you might say it's not working.
Or is the actual contract, which you have the language and attorney can see, or maybe highlight or assist, you know, cannot roll over anything ever.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, it would take a vote in this board to continue any type of agreement.
Right, understood, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we could ask your consideration of an, of an ordinance approving an extension to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Elgin regarding boundary line agreements.
This is just an extension of the prior, previously passed boundary line agreement with the city of Elgin. Um, we were coming up on the extension term, and as you all are aware, and all it does is kick it out at the same terms.
Did you read over all the documents? This is drafted by Cotton, right?
Yeah, this is, yes.
I know him well, you read this over, thoroughly?
Yes.
Who was mayor then?
Yeah, it's, it's, you can see.
Look at some boundary line, that makes me sick to my stomach.
I know. That's back in the days where Hampshire went like this and let the world go on around it.
Oh my God.
We can't change.
Let the world go, let the world go past forty-seven.
Yeah.
We can't change, right?
No, this is, they, they don't, they want, they don't want it to change.
I know that.
We could go into an agree, we could go into negotiations with them, but I don't think it'd be very fruitful.
Right, I mean, we could not, we could not approve this, but.
But what happens if it doesn't get approved? And it's still grab.
It's open, yeah, it's open, that's land grab, then, I mean, when these don't get approved and there are land, there are jo, joint boundary line agreements in high history, it has turned into a, an annexation grab where people just start filing for petitions for annexation.
Well, and if you look at where it is, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't, we have some services out near there, but in order for us to really annex it, we'd have to put water and sewer out there, which costs us money that we don't have, but.
Hell's has been running sewer and water west for years.
They've been fighting it, they still are doing land annexation stuff over there, I mean, it's, it's.
I worked on a city of Elgin project where we went under the Fox River.
In answer to your question, I, 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 I'm with you as far as the map, it makes me sick too, but I don't really call it more big enough to stop.
So, I just think. The neighborhood often, Damish and seventy-two and Big Timber, that's all considered Elgin.
I thought we had some Hampshire addresses.
Well, you have your addresses, but it's Elgin.
That only because of postal. It's a, yeah, ZipCo goes to post office, there's parts of Chicago that are in Elwood Park if you run it. Don't even ask me about the South suburbs, you have Harvey Blue Island, Dixmoor and essentially the Dalton area, all being different areas, you know.
So, I know this doesn't apply to us, but if you're looking at this, Pingree Grove is technically Elgin.
They've got an agreement with them as well. Yeah, this is the orig, well, they may have agreements now, but this is where our border is. This is their, this is the original map from oh-three, they're just wanting to extend the agreements that, that codify our borders with them.
Because Cambridge Lakes is entirely jurisdictional, according to this map.
And, and the history as I know it was that Pingree Grove expanded in the way that they did because Elgin came all the way out to where my Buck Brothers is in the early two thousands and Pingree Grove said, wait a minute, no way, and heck, are you gonna take this, we're gonna take it, and Hampshire said, you guys have fun, fight it out, we're gonna stay here.
Right, but how, how do we sign an agreement that covers other municipalities and legal areas?
We don't care about.
It doesn't matter.
We care about our border.
Where does our border stop? That is not clearly defined.
Where does our border stop? That is not clearly defined down here.
So that's again, that's because it's a jurisdictional boundary area. It is, there are buffers.
Land area, not an annex area.
Correct, there are buffers. There are incorporated, there are unincorporated areas that they have jurisdiction over, we have jurisdiction over, and our agreements between those, they go date back to two thousand and three. Think of it more like, rather than Hampshire and Elgin, I would think of it Hampshire and not Hampshire in that manner, if that helps, Trusty Kelly.
Let me give you an example of how this works because it's come up just in the last few weeks. Pingree Grove has a lead on a commercial development on forty-seven, and the client is interested, there's, there are, there's a parcel uh, owned by, sorry, two parcels separated by forty-seven owned by the same people. Um, and that, this potential commercial development, which has a lot of retail and it's a lot of retail tax, our sales tax um, has, has approached Pingree and they want the west side of forty-seven in that particular area is in our planning area. Um, so the village, our village administrator called and said, would, would Hampshire be willing to swap that piece of property for another piece of property somewhere? Because we want to put commercial development there. And I said, I don't think so. Uh, they, they came back with the fact, I said, we'd be happy to work with you, and if you want to pitch that development on your side. I, I really struggle still to find a developer um that comes in and says we want to go on two sides of the road. Usually the shopping center stays on one side.
Yeah.
That's what it is, but uh, we do think that there's a large retailer in there. Uh, Mo has a lead on a, a retailer that he thinks is interested in that. I can't mention the name, but it is a large grocery store. Uh, that would probably be an anchor. Um, so we, then they asked if we would be willing to consider a tax sharing, a sales tax sharing contract agreement, and I said conceivably. But what we prefer to do is work with you to, to handle our side. And so we sit down with the developer together. Um, in fact, what they said first was, at the end, when, during the discussions, they expressed an interest in that parcel. So there's no guarantee they would ever develop our site. But in my opinion, if there's a real project out there, uh, we should keep that. I mean, we only have a very small portion of forty-seven that we even touch. And uh, so, so I mean, at this point, they're, they're planning to come back to us and meet jointly with this project. Uh, because I told them I didn't think our board would be in favor of swapping land. They were proposing to swap some land down on Route twenty down by down by Black Diamond, which is not real, not really in demand right now. The, the other thing these, these boundary agreements are important for is when there are projects that go to Kane County, and there was one recently who, who was asking to build an industrial building in Kane County. And Kane County will come to us and ask us, are you okay with that, or do you prefer to have that in your town because it's in your planned area? So if that, they'll look at these boundary maps and that's who they'll call. It's either us or Pingree, depending on whose plan, planning area it's in.
So I guess that's where I'm confused, Mr. Hedges, because in the map in exhibit one, it only shows Village of Hampshire jurisdictional area and City of Elgin jurisdictional area.
Mm-hmm.
And all of that area you just talked about is in ours. And in fact, we go way further over to the right. There is no representation of the village of, or the village of Pingree having any jurisdictional area.
I think that's why it's important to understand that. We're just trying to, we're pushing back as far as we can with our agreement, and this, these boundaries haven't changed. This is the same boundary.
Oh, when, when was this done?
Thousand and three. So this hasn't changed. Back then, back then Pingree didn't have Cambridge Lakes and all that. It was still.
So we have an agreement with Pingree.
We have a separate.
Correct, we have a separate.
It's actually a try, it's a try agreement with Pingree and Huntley because it affects the intersection of forty-seven quite a bit.
We have agreements with every single standing town, so.
Burlington, you know.
Yeah, being that, and we just renewed the one for Burlington a couple of months, uh, beginning of year. And so, so, I mean, if you want, we can push back and say, hey, we want an updated map, but at the end of the day, the only, the only borders that we're agreeing this agreement for are the ones that are with the city of Elgin. I mean, if we have an agree, we have a current agreement with Pingree, so if they're, if Pingree's borders touch in this agreement, it would go along with Pingree. Now, I mean, that's just, that's what it is.
Working, working in Elgin for forty years, I say we sign it, let's not poke the lion. Because I say we should, we should. They'll come at us big time.
Yeah, I'm not saying we should fight Elgin. I'm just, I'm wondering on the legal side of us signing an agreement for boundaries between us and Elgin that technically reside in another municipality.
The, the Ping, help me out here. The Pingree Grove.
It may not.
The Pingree Grove, the Pingree Grove will bring in a super city.
Yes, the Pingree.
The ring will supersede that. I am not.
Yeah.
Um, I don't share that concern necessarily because all we're saying is what was in place will stay in place. Um, and if we don't have jurisdiction, the existence or nonexistence of Pingree Grove is a nullity in so much that we recognize that this is not our territory and we can't do anything about it, and they are prohibited from doing something on ours.
So, but that's my question, okay? And, and I'm not, I don't have an opinion on this. This is my question. We had this agreement before we had an agreement with Pingree. Right?
Right.
Now we have an agreement with Pingree, and like you said, Pingree's agreement supersedes this. When, when two municipalities have an agreement, or let's say in this case, three, there's two different agreements and one supersedes another. Can we extend and continue?
Yes.
An agreement that another one says it supersedes this one?
But it would only supersede me about conflict, like this is a conflict of law. Yeah, I don't, oh.
Right?
Trying to look at it sideways on the website.
The only reason I bring this out is you can see the orange at the bottom. That's the Pingree Grove jurisdictional agreement and then Huntley.
Yep.
This, this is the try, try agreement that we have.
Yeah.
So this kind of, I mean, at this point, Elgin really isn't significant to us, but there's no reason not to Elgin.
No, and, and I, I completely understand this and, and appreciate this was done after that. My only question was, because this was done after this, can we still legally approve an old agreement that doesn't match the one that we already said supersedes this one?
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Because at the end of, at the end of the day, it's Hampshire versus not Hampshire, and if there's a problem, us recognizing that this is the city of Elgin as an example, we have the agreement with Pingree that would be, with the Pingree borders of this agreement that supersedes the Elgin agreement.
And Trusty Kelly, to your concern, section five of the ordinance, which is a section we put in almost all of our ordinances, is a a superseder clause, and in the event of a material difference between these agreements.
And again, I'm not worried about this at all.
Okay.
Um, in the event of a supers, there is, anything in conflict would be superseded by this ordinance. And I think the president made a good point. It is us or not us, and I don't mean to be whatever they're saying now, othering, but it's either Hampshire or it's not Hampshire, and this is a defensive posture. Honestly, I have been part of many land grab municipalities where there are annexation wars going on, and the part of the reason that the manager said and was artful about it is, you don't want to be in the middle of a land grab war. It becomes arduous. What's very nice about working out here, it's a little bit more civilized and you all have boundary line agreements, and we're not filing the annexation petitions on top of each other and getting them recorded one before the other. So to keep the status quo in place, I would highly recommend passing this ordinance. I, I really don't want to go back to them and say, update the map, and then they're going to go, oh, you want us to update the map? Let's talk about where these lines are. No. And I am happy to have an annexation go fast with everyone, I know. Sure you would. You're like a taxi cab driver. Then neither would be wrong.
And you have to be able, right, and then it becomes who can actually get utilities to people and whatnot. So I would say the extension in the agreement that what this is, is not, I do not see any objection with it.
Any other questions?
Can we get an updated map after we pass this?
We're, we have, we have a map of our own that depicts all of the.
Actually, all of our boundary line agreement maps are on the website. This is the only, this used to be in the boardroom here. We took it down because of the historical pictures are coming.
Well, let this be really filled out.
We've filled out a lot, but there's still, there's still, still a lot of fill-through tabs in the back. That, that's how it stands in my office.
Man, right.
Now, yeah, this is a pretty, this is a pretty, this particularly, that's why it's in my office. I look at this map almost every day when I get a call from developers or from a neighboring community.
Any other questions?
Section five that you pointed to, uh, Mr. Viselli?
Yes.
I'm probably really reading this wrong, so I just bear with me. The way I'm reading this is it's saying that all code provisions, ordinances, resolutions, rules and orders, or parts thereof in conflict herewith, so with this agreement, to the extent of such conflict are hereby superseded.
Yeah.
Doesn't that mean this supersedes those now?
If they're in conflict, but how are you saying that the material portion of a map from a different jurisdictional agreement that didn't exist when this was important, when this one was originally issued in two thousand and three is now no, a nullity because.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm asking is, what I'm asking is, this is saying that this now supersedes anything that has been done before.
In conflict.
That's in conflict.
It's in conflict.
We have an agreement, this try agreement that now says we, we don't go to that area. That's Pingree, that's Huntley.
It says we don't, well, stop. It says we don't go to that area.
It says Pingree judicial.
Right, but well, first of all, that's not an agreement. We don't go to that area, just like we don't go to that area. Our rights or privileges are not extended beyond a certain, a certain geographical territory.
So this then does not nullify those.
Does not nullify that.
This does not supersede those agreements.
This is not, I, it does not supersede those agreements. They are parallel agreements with jurisdiction. The only superseding one because of time, if there's a conflict between the two on a material term. And then usually judges rule, if there's not, if the trustee will tell you, unless there's a material reason, last their most recent usually trumps, but that is at a long list of other statutory constructs.
Okay.
I am not concerned about it at all. I'll add a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Because it's a boundary agreement, I'll ask for a vote, please.
Please do.
Mr. Co.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm not going to bracket them, but I am going to I mentioned that the next three items are all public works projects for the utilities department. Uh, Mark's been working pretty hard in getting this, his, uh, capital budget, uh, spent. So with that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution approving the contract with American Pipeline Solutions for well thirteen raw water main cleaning at an amount of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. There's an agenda supplement on page thirty-six of your packet um, from Ms. Lyons, and she will explain this briefly for you.
I think you're.
Yeah, thirty-six is the map.
Thirty-six, yeah.
My next one is the ice pigging.
You're right. Wrong page number?
Fifty-seven, I believe.
Fifty-seven, okay.
Okay, good. Doesn't click much to confuse. There's the A B, okay.
Laurie, would you like to give the board a brief summary, please?
You're right.
Uh, well, thirteen is located on Click Street, um, uh, in the area of the street department's current facility. And, um, the raw water line runs from Click Street all the way up to the water treatment plant on Harmony Road. And, um, as indicated in the agenda supplement, it's, um, has a little bit, um.
It should be eight, okay. Yes.
It's fifty-seven.
It's right.
Um, so, um, anyway, the line needs to be cleaned out, so we're going to use a proprietary um, method for doing that called ice pigging, where, um, uh, the line is accessed, um, and flushed out with a slurry basically of water and ice. And, uh, the benefit of this, I don't know if anybody watched the YouTube video, but it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Um, um, the benefit of this is there's very little waste, um, you know, like lines could be cleaned with chemicals, but then you have to figure out how to treat the chemicals. What essentially comes out of there is um, wastewater that can go to the wastewater treatment plant, so.
A lot of people don't know this, but actually I was in a rock bin by the name of Ice Pigging once.
Nice. Get that in the mail.
I didn't need to hear that before I went to bed, did I?
I'm asking my instrument, boy.
I ain't touching that either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're off.
Sorry, I had to bring celebrity to it. Because, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Lyons about the ice pigging?
I have a couple. One is in the ordinance itself on page sixty with the whereas is, um. I, I was going to add something to one whereas, and then I saw it in, in the next whereas, so the one, two, three, four, five, so the fifth whereas.
Page sixty?
Yep. Page, page sixty, though, one, two, three, four, five, six, which is fifth whereas.
Fifty.
Just to add at the very end, a sole source provider of the service in the U.S. Just because we're wa, we're waiving the bidding requirements, and I think it's kind of important to say this is the only one in the United States that we can do this with. Because it says the sole source provider of ice pigging in the U.S. is what I had read. Someplace else.
Okay, sure, all right.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to adding in the U.S.
Because otherwise it's so, so, right, sole source provider in Kane, in Illinois. So, and only because we're, we're, we're waving. I just wanted to make it clear that that was there to do. My other question, um, I understand my little question. Uh, the location for where they're going to be staging this, it says a secure location to stage the equipment required for ice production. Um, page sixty-three, eight, section eight. I just wanted to know where, where that's going to be and.
I don't believe it's been determined yet, honestly.
Okay.
On that one, yeah.
It'd be up to Mark, right? To figure out.
Um.
Mark or Dave?
Yeah, Mark or Dave.
Well, really, yeah.
Yeah, they said.
But it's just for staging.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We don't have anything to do with it. That has to do with our.
Just like having, you know, right, when we're doing the water main repair, we have.
I'm good with it. I understand.
And, and I guess maybe my other question is it's, it's ice, and they need a spot to be able to make it here because it's only good for twelve hours? Are they bringing it in from some place?
So, again, did you watch the video?
No, I did not.
So, um, they bring it in like in a truck that it is, um, almost like a milk truck, like, you know, so it's refrigerated.
Frozen, okay.
Yeah, it comes.
They're not knocking on our resident's door asking, Bryce.
Right, I need a spot.
Casey buying ten-pound bags.
Right.
They're big, big.
Um, page sixty-three then also for four, uh, number four, it said that, uh, because the reports are in high demand, it could take up to three months to generate them. And that's the chemical, biological, and mechanical analysis of the sediments in there. It's three months before we find out what was in there?
Yes.
It's, doesn't matter, don't it?
No.
Something's bad in there that's.
Look, it's sent to the EPA, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have, it's all, it's all within compliance.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Never done ice pigging before.
I told you, I had a bunch of hits with that, yeah. Res, I, I entertain a resolution approving a contract with American Pipeline Solutions for well thirteen raw water main cleaning. Motion, no.
Section.
Awesome, awesome. Questions, comments? Ms. Burke, Nicole, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Co.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution waiving formal bidding and approving a contract with Trojan Technologies for Wastewater Treatment Facility Ultraviolet System Equipment in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twelve cents. And I will take the risk of, uh, telling you that it's on page seventy at least. And this is a, an agenda supplement from E E I.
Hearing.
Questions, uh, Mr. Paulson is on.
So the actual cost of the equipment, I'm sorry, I don't want to, um, yeah, it's two hundred and ninety-two thousand three oh eight, and the, the price that you quoted is the forty percent that they're asking for the payment at the, at the agreement, i- if you agree to this part.
So would we have to pass another one? Have another motion to pass?
No, so the.
Change the total amount.
The ordinance states that it's two ninety-two, three oh eight.
So that's what we need to pass in the.
Yes, and then it's just the payment out.
Right.
Um, yeah, for the forty percent, yeah.
So the motion needs to have the.
Yeah, should have the correct amount, two ninety-two, three oh eight.
I just have a, a rant, I shouldn't say rant, not a technical question for Mr. Paulson, just in general. There was a, on the last paragraph of page seventy, it says that in the fiscal year, we budgeted a total value of seven hundred thousand for the project. but the cost is two ninety-two, three oh eight. Is, are there things that we were budgeting for that?
So this is just the equipment piece? We actually will walk to bid for the labor portion? I mean, Tim, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this, this is, um, for the equipment, because we need to get the equipment ordered, uh, in order to meet the deadline because of the fabrication time that it takes. So we will, uh, probably in December, that will be, you know, awarding a contractor to a contractor who, a contract to a contractor who's going to install the equipment. And at that, at that time, they will take over this contract for purchase of the equipment. And then, you, you know, the remainder of the budget is for their costs for installing the equipment.
And it's not only installation, there's some retrofitting to the, to the actual stuff that this UV system goes into.
So it may still end up at the seven.
Yes, very well. That's what's in the budget for this project, yes. Yep, so. Potentially could be more, hopefully not.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion waiving formal bidding requirement, or formal bidding and approving a contract with Trojan Technologies in the corrected amount of two ninety-two, three oh eight.
Don't move. Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Kirk, can you call her, please?
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thanks. With that, we would ask, uh, your consideration of a resolution waiving formal bidding and approving, approving a contract with Batcon for wastewater treatment plant variable speed drives. Uh, these are called VFDs, in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, you'll find in the general supplement from Ms. Lyons on page seventy-six in the packet.
Lori?
Okay, thanks.
Um, so there's actually fourteen different, um, variables, uh, frequency drives that are going to be replaced in this entire project. Um, they will be beginning what we're going to call phase one, which is, um, the Harmony home, um, station building and the, and the VFDs there. So we're asking you to approve the entire project at one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and then, um, uh, we're asking, um, as part of accounts payable to make a fifty percent down payment to get the equipment ordered and get the project started, um, for that Harmony home building.
One, one last point, um, even though we don't have a buy Hampshire policy, this is a Hampshire resident that runs this company.
It's great to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, uh, waiving, uh, approving a resolution waiving the formal bidding requirements and approving a contract with Batcons, uh, for wastewater treatment plants for variable frequency drives. So.
Second.
Questions, comments?
One question. We waived the bidding requirements for the ice picking because they're the only company that does it.
Yes.
Are we waiving here because we have looked into it and these are the both cost effective and.
The, the real reason why we're waiving here is, um, Batcon is a trusted partner of the village, and they do all the programming of, um, everything from SCADA to variable frequency drives that, um, make up our systems, both water and sewer.
All right, great, thank you.
He's been around a little while.
Yes.
And he just bought a house here, apparently, yeah, in the last couple of years, I think. So, yeah, he, uh, he makes that work over there, and Mark likes working with us. Any other questions? I have a first and a second. Ms. Kirk, can you call her, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Now for everybody's favorite, staff reports. Tonight we have the building report and the engineering report. Please review them at this time. Mr. Khan and Mr. Paulson, wait on bated breath for any questions that you might have about either report. Any questions?
Are, are we going to talk about this in the report?
I was just going to ask.
Sure. Actually, that's only there because we got our public hearing last week, and those brochures were produced for the public hearing. Nope, nobody came to the public hearing, by the way. Dave had a nice two-hour visit with, uh, staff from E E I, but I just thought.
I forgot to come.
There, there were a lot of questions about, um, about the, uh, about that map, so I thought you'd each like to have a brochure, but it's not really related to this.
I know we posted legally an update or, we like put this out on social that this is happening, and we advertised.
It's already happened, it's last week.
Not this meeting, the safe route to school that we're.
If you're asking the mayor if he posted it on Facebook, no.
That's not what I'm asking.
No, I wouldn't suggest doing that because the letting isn't until next June now, so it's, it's going to be a long time before we see the sidewalks.
No, he was asking if we published the event on social.
No, what I was asking is if we've been talking about on social or in water bills or wherever that we're working to get these sidewalks and kids have a safe route to school. So this is a pretty good thing for the community, and then we're dealing with IDOT, right?
Yeah, the problem is.
Yeah, I would, yes. I wouldn't jump, uh, too far through a hoop when you're dealing with IDOT.
If you remember, if you remember, two weeks ago, three years ago, we actually partnered with all the schools, and the little, and little people playtime to get the communication out, because in order for us to receive this grant, we published the heck out of it on social, and we came down to the wire, and we almost didn't get it because we didn't get enough responses. So we published it like crazy when we got it. We published it, we got the grant like crazy. Um, we do receive questions pretty regularly from the people up and down those streets, uh, about where we are with the status of this, and so we, we communicated regularly with those who have asked, but we haven't done a big social media push of, hey, by the way, here's an update on this project, because, like, this whole public hearing situation that they just threw this requirement on us and, and.
Just last week, the, in fact, you were pretty persistent about wanting to know when it was going to be let. We told you April last time. It's just been pushed to June, just this week.
Who pushed it?
I had that.
Do they give reasons why?
Um, not very good ones, and no. I mean.
Don't let it, probably.
I'm just a, I'm just an observer, watching emails go back and forth from its agencies.
I mean, I.
E E I really, I mean, they're the ones that really handle this for us.
Yeah, and I get it. Mr. Paulson, I would hate to think that IDOT is, uh, like, no, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna say it. I, I hate to think that they're going to continue to push a program that allows children a safe way to walk to a school for whatever reason they're doing.
Well, and, and.
And I don't know the reason. I don't, I'm guessing we don't get reasons, but this is a, this is a neighborhood street. It is not an Illinois highway, it is not a county highway. It is a, a community, I'm going to call it a one and a half lane road, maybe a two lane road, within the neighborhood, and we're, and IDOT is keeping us from being able to give kids a safe.
It's grant funds, it's grant funds.
And also, our seventy-two remodel, uh, didn't we have to pay IDOT a year in advance?
Yeah, we did.
And they sat on the money, and we got no interest on that money. We had to give them six, seven hundred thousand?
Uh, I think it was.
Just reconciliations.
Like one hundred and eighty-two thousand or something, is my rec.
Well, and so, and to add to that, because we got awarded the grant, and then they didn't fund it, and then once they finally funded it, then we had to go through with all these hoops that they keep moving the goalposts on. And so it's been, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I don't remember when we applied.
Well, well, correct me if I'm wrong, I really feel like it was right, one, it was one of the first big projects that I worked on right after I got sworn in as mayor. It was the push to try to get that done. I think we applied for the grant in twenty-one, before I became mayor, and then right as I took over, we risked losing the grant because we weren't getting the response from the community that we needed, and so we really leaned hard on the schools and pestered like crazy, and I think we only made it by one survey.
Yeah, I, I remember that, but I, I guess, do we know, is, is this happening to other communities?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, oh.
I got it, victorious.
Very important.
It, it happens on the road jobs, too.
They'll blame it on their, we're short staff, we don't have enough engineers, we don't, they'll blame it on all of us.
These big road jobs, they, IDOT will hold its money. And this six months longer than they're supposed to.
There's a twelve-year delay on an overpass once, twelve years, so that would be three literal terms, like that, it's like three Olympians. I mean, that's, that is an extended period of that.
And the grant.
There's eight hundred pound gorilla on a bus, and they're going to do what they want. If you want their money, you play by their rules.
If you remember, though, we also had a safety issue with them with the seventy-two and state street crossing, where they refused to put a crosswalk from the, on the west, no, 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 at seventy-two and state, on the west side, because of their gas station, they said it was limited land, they refused to put a crosswalk, so those kids can cross seventy-two safely to get. And Trusty Kelly, I think this is a good call by the village not to put that out on socials right now, because we're going to create expectations that aren't going to be met, and it's just.
Makes us look bad.
And we did, and we did, and we already did that, to be fair, when we, when we were awarded the grant.
It makes sense to me. I totally get it.
It's completely disappointing, goal is to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not a disappointment builder.
Yeah.
Church is finished by school and, and the fall of twenty-five.
I mean, this is such a tiny amount for that organization.
But that, to you, that's a great point.
Tiny.
That's why, that's the problem, because we're a blip in the ocean when they could get more bang for their buck and do something else. Not that I'd worked in, but that might be how some people think.
Yeah, we're at the end of the buffet line, yeah.
We, we put timeline out after the board, uh, grant got awarded, and then we blew through their timeline just waiting to get the grant funded. So we get asked all the time from people, when's this going to happen? Oh, man, I'd really like to have sidewalks, you know?
There was a really great meeting, though, I, I have to tell you about the great meeting. Tim was, Tim was on that meeting. There were like fifteen of them. And, you know, just a few people from, uh, E E I, and I was on that meeting, and, uh, you joined at the end. Um, so it, it is ongoing, it's just, it, for some reason, it's getting pushed, but unfortunately, it wasn't a year push, it was just a few months, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's getting pushed because of their, you know, they have very strict deadlines, and we can't meet their deadlines for the April letting, because ironically, they haven't gotten back stuff, like specifically the cultural clearance we have not received, and we can't make our submittal until we get, you know, this, this, these documents back from a different part of IDOT, so that we can put the full submittal that is required, you know, to get on the letting date, so that's kind of the, the trapper in with that. As soon as we get the clearances we need from IDOT, we will get it into IDOT, and we'll be on the next available letting.
So what's, wait, they do.
Can the residents do anything? We like, no?
No, IDOT don't care about anything.
Can we? I, um, I'm going to be in Springfield over the next, probably next two months, and, uh, um, I've worked on it for a while, and I'm rather happy to knock on some doors, if that will make everybody happy. And then I promised nothing, but I've also seen funding come through like that, and I'm sure Mr. Hedges has as well. I will, I will ask, and I will report back in the next, like, after I get back to.
I don't know that you're going to have any more left of Mr. Hedges, because they tried that same approach, but.
Well, I mean, the Secretary of Transportation could probably pull, pull any grant he wants to the front of the pile, but I don't have that kind of sway.
I know.
Yeah.
I, I just want to clarify something real quick, though, because what I just heard wasn't that they didn't fund the grant. What I just heard Mr. Paulson say was they aren't giving Mr. Paulson or E E I a piece of information, and.
The Secretary of Transportation could call that person responsible, say, I want that done today.
Right, but that I understand, because we don't know when we're going to get it. At the beginning of November, we've already communicated, we don't think we can hit their February deadline, so now they've moved it to April.
Right, right. I'm sorry, it's been moved from April to June, I think was the last time.
Right.
So we don't know that we can hit their April deadline at the beginning of November, and all we're waiting for is that one piece, so they've already moved it to June.
Comes from them.
That, that, I, I understand that. How long does it take, once we get that, for you to finish what E E I needs to do?
Uh, it will not take long, because we have, we're, we have it all assembled, so we can get, as soon as we get it, we can get it turned around in the same week, and, and into them.
Okay, so then in the conversation with IDOT, did they indicate to you that you weren't going to get it in time for that week turnaround to meet the April deadline?
I, that was with a colleague of mine, but I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand when it, when it turned from an IDOT moved it, it was, it seems like an IDOT moved it because we said we couldn't hit a deadline, or E E I said they can't hit a deadline, which.
Which means we're waiting for information from IDOT.
Correct, but that's why I'm wondering, because it's November, and we're talking about an April deadline, that's why I asked, how long does it actually, once we get that, take to turn that around?
They need, apparently they need six months to.
Yeah. So I will, I will say this, you're, the board is equally as frustrated, uh, uh, equally as frustrated about the board here, and we only have to deal with these discussions for a few hours every couple of weeks. I hate to be staff.
Yeah, I don't think it's a reflection of staff.
No, but I'm just saying that this is your reality.
We have to deal with these people all day long.
This is, this is, this is staff's reality.
IDOT is more screwed up than, than you think.
You saw the construction that our developer did, paid for their new lanes up on twenty, and that's taken forever for IDOT to sign off on it. I, I don't think they still have signed up on it yet, so. So, I mean, every time we touch IDOT, it takes.
It's just, to put this in perspective, and, uh, I, my, like, one of my very first meetings when I became Steve back in two thousand and thirteen, this room, there was no, like, no air conditioning, it was ninety degrees in this room, and IDOT gave a presentation about how they were going to redo seventy-two and state in two thousand and thirteen. And when did that finally just get done? So, I mean, IDOT just moves at IDOT's pace, that's just it, and if we want the money, which we do, we got to play their games, and that's it. And to your point, Trusty Coe, we're probably going to have to put money out on the street at some point, and then just sit out. That's just, that's it, and we're not, and we're going to lose interest in all that stuff.
That's why I'm asking you, if this is like a, a thing that our residents can go to their legislators about, because this is ridiculous. This is our tax dollars.
Sure you can.
They're holding them hostage.
Sure you can.
Sure, it can go nowhere.
I know, it's very. Legislature, so Republican, it's run by Democrats, so it's like.
How about Congressman?
Yeah, how about, how about Congressman, was it Raj?
Rajah?
Rajah.
Well, it's a, it's a state, it's a state like that.
Yeah, but sometimes when a US congressman makes a phone call to their connections at the state government level, it could have a different effect, and I'm just throwing ideas up there, right?
Obviously, we, we've worked so much with IDOT, this is not a lot of money, to be frank, it's not a huge grant. I, I'm not sure this is the one you really want to throw all your influence at. We're not going to make.
The ones that we're working on.
No, I mean, something else might come up, is what I'm saying, a more important, something like a signal that we need somewhere, there's traffic.
Call it, please.
It should be repaired.
Can I ask them, just a dumb question, because I just.
Sure.
Not sure. The letting that we keep talking about for April being moved to June, what exactly is letting, like breaking ground?
That's when you issue, that's when you let the bids, you take.
Let the bids, okay, thank you. Because I, I kept remembering, Trusty Robinson, at a previous meeting, complaining about the fact that when they finally did some construction, it was right week of school, sorry.
Started, so just give you a brochure.
I just was thinking of that, not having it happen. The, the worst time for them to do this and break ground is just as schools starting.
Well, hopefully that'll be done by.
It won't affect school. They're, they're, they're not using that area now.
No.
So after the boards and stuff are up, they're still not going to use it. They probably will use it to.
Our goal is to get this project finished by the time school starts next fall.
Okay.
Great. Well, that will be our goal.
That's our goal. We'll see if we make it. No reflection on staff. All right.
I'm sorry, this isn't even on the agenda.
No, yeah, sure it is.
It's in the report.
It's in the report, right?
No, actually, I just gave you a brochure, I didn't.
No, it's, it's number one under Village Projects in the engineering report.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just supplemental material to the, to the agenda.
And it references this, by the way, so we're, we're good.
So I guess it's, I put it off.
But it's still your fault, so I appreciate it.
Uh, just because of the conversation, we had the Park and Rin Storm Sewer Improvement, who, who's that grant through?
Uh, Tammy Duckworth's office, I think. And then Stevenson, uh.
Seersen, one hundred and fifty, and the other, federal grant was six hundred thousand.
Okay, so we don't know if it's approved yet, that's what.
They're both approved, yeah, they're, it's just they're waiting for engineering, and, yeah, it's, this is all on track.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
FEMA grants are very different than IDOT.
That's why I was just wondering, because they didn't say what the grant was through.
Federal FEMA, we had to deal with them, and, and as well as we had to get Kane County to update their disaster, um, they had no plan, they were five years late in developing a plan. And they, they did it just for us, for the Villages of Hampshire. They really expedited that process.
Great.
But Mo is going to be going to a meeting next Friday.
Great.
Go months.
Any other questions about the engineering report or building report that we haven't talked about? Okay, review them, and, uh, send all questions to Jimmy Besselli. Lori, you know what, we, we haven't taught, heard from the chief, so send him to the police chief. Any questions about either of these reports, see if you can pay attention.
Sure, I would.
All right, uh, next is accounts payable to personnel. Three hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Make the motion to approve accounts payable to personnel for three oh four ninety-nine.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Kirk, can you call her, please?
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion passes sixty-one.
Okay, next, the regular accounts payable in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents to be paid on or before November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Baseball.
Uh-oh. What do we got?
Park bench and plaque. Why are we giving Stanley almost twenty-nine hundred bucks?
Hold on, hold on.
So we, uh, the village received a contribution, um, and then purchased a new park bench. It, it's like to sit along State Street.
Right, so he bought it, he bought it, right, gave us.
Victor Stanley is our vendor.
That's the vendor. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, it has nothing to do with Stanley.
Maybe less than a minute and explain this. Mr. Swallow was in today and I finally asked him how it used to work. It used to work if somebody wanted to donate a bench, we gave him the name of the company and they went and bought the bench and brought it to us. First of all, I didn't know that because we hadn't bought a bench in a long time, but the Lions Club came and it wanted to donate a bench last year. So I went to the vendor, Richard Stanley, and we bought the bench. Actually, first we created a nice donation form so they could show it to their accountant or whoever they might wanna write it off to. Uh, and that says one box, you check you wanna donate a bench. Below the box, it says, wait, you want to subscribe on it? You just fill it out, write a check and then we do the rest. It takes about three months to get these benches. In fact, another bench just came in today. Uh, it was supposed to be a big secret, but it's not anymore because it was told, um. Michelle at the Copper Barrel bought one for, uh, Randy's family, uh, and that'll be dedicated sometime next week. In the meantime, you might see the new, uh, bike rack over in front of, um. Painted Cow, what'd you call it? Oh, I thought you said Painted Cow. That's a different ice cream place. Neon Cow, and that was donated by the Girl Scouts and they wanted to give us a bike rack, so we created another box, they're checking the box with the bike rack. So now we have a nice donation form. If anybody wants to give us a bench or a bike rack, we could just give them the form, we take care of it and then they just write a check.
Do we, do we decide where this place?
Uh, we kinda work with businesses in this, in that case, uh, Neon Cow and the Lions Club both wanted to put the bench over there. And when it, and the Girl Scouts specifically asked to put it in front of Neon. And this one is, this one will go in front of Garden Berry, excuse me, in front of. And they're gonna put it in a place so that they can hopefully get another bench. The next bench donation we get, we're gonna encourage them to also put in front of Copper Barrel. Because that's a good place for people to sit when they're waiting for reservations.
Correct, my hearing wasn't good on that.
Sorry.
Um, you say you're looking for somebody to sponsor that? The bike rack, or it's.
If somebody wants to sponsor something, I would be happy to do another bench or even another bike rack.
Any other questions?
Just, um, page two, just the Bank of New York Mountain. It's, what, what is that one for again? I know it's something that we finance and we pay once a year.
Um, we actually pay twice a year. This is the, um, piece with the principal, but in the second payment, we pay interest only. Um, this is a, it was a two thousand and sixteen refunded bond that was originally issued for the Tiff district and did the improvements along highs and industrial. And then, um, a portion of the funds were used, um, to improve the lower portion, like the older portion of the future program.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? I obtain a motion to approve the regular accounts payment. So. Any other questions? Mr. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
This is voter.
Hi.
Motion passes sixty-one.
All right, Mr. Kelly, you have anything for BBC tonight?
Be, be, wait, before you just jump on, because I know we've already voted on it, the solicitor signs, it does.
Those are the updated signs that we post coming in, out of the, in and out of the community. So we have them on light posts, they're metal signs that list the ordinance and how we enforce it.
Okay.
And so we had the old ones that we took down and we had new ones that we put up with the new rules.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought maybe.
Says you must register.
Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. Sorry for interrupting you.
Not at all. Uh, BBC will meet next Wednesday here at six thirty. All are welcome. It's a fun time.
Any new business tonight?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, we lean on Canadian Railway to fix our crossing.
Supposedly the summer is what their timeline was for us to have that.
This past summer.
Just coming summer, right? Wasn't that their timeline?
We, we jumped that board right away with that.
And we've been working, they, they've had several meetings. Uh, I get reports frequently. If you'd like an update, I can give you an update at the next meeting if you wouldn't mind giving me a little time to talk to Patrick, their, their director, they call him the Public Works Director.
I just lie to them, telling them your residents are going batshit crazy.
Because.
The crossing is.
The crossing itself is pretty bad. I mean, and if they can't, and they're not gonna commit to redoing our crossing right now, they could send somebody out to level that out a little bit, because what happens is.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that.
That's what, what happens is when you drive a truck, a car that doesn't ride very good, like a pickup or like a car with narrow tires now, I mean.
Or a truck pulling a trailer with a mower on it.
It'll, it'll buck you pretty bad.
Yeah. There, there's a timeframe, though, right, that they agree.
Yeah, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
I thought it was five years from the time that we.
There is a, there is a date certain that has to be completed by.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, right now they're still going through. Trying to remember. Transportation Safety Board or whatever it was.
Federal.
NTSB, yeah, I think they're still dealing with them similar to I dot, I would say. Because they do give me quite, quite a few updates.
So trusty posture, you were involved.
That young attorney that we dealt with, he was really sharp.
Because I, I, I mean, the number of trains have increased, so even when, I mean, people have mentioned that, even when we've got our festivals and things out on the street, they're mad, wow, it's, the three trains have gone by since we've been out.
Actually, they told me that they didn't expect the trains to increase for probably another year or two. So I think that might be just.
I think the timing has changed. Because it was some of the vendors that were at.
You used to hear one here every night. I can't remember what time it was, about six or five. No, that's.
It seems like they moved the timing around for sure. It seems like there's more in the middle of the day than there used to be.
Yes, because it used to be like five in the morning and then like eleven o'clock at night.
It makes it better, actually, for people who hear the train going by now and whispering until we get this quiet sound.
I believe we've discussed this before, but I've been approached by many people over the past few months about the intersection at State and Jeffers, Jefferson, is it Jefferson right here?
The main.
By the Garden Berry, um, with concerns about a four-way stop there. And I, I feel like we've had this discussion before.
We have. In fact, we learned what a four-way stop would do when that train got stuck on the tracks last week. Traffic backed all the way up to seventy-two and that's what would happen with a four-way stop here, my bad. Now, that was considered when we did the Streetscape project. We had EEI traffic engineer, engineer that for us. Definitely did that. And we continued to fight off all kinds of requests downtown. I had one just this week that wanted, somebody wanted to drop off something for their, for their restaurant. Uh, people want handicap, more handicap places, uh, in front of their businesses, but everyone, everybody wants it in front of their business. And so far, we've just stuck to our guns and said, this is, this was engineered for safety first and aesthetic second. And so we don't wanna change the, we don't wanna change anything downtown that was not engineered that way for traffic engineering. Um, and that goes for handicapped stalls, uh, pickup zones, you know, during COVID, we had five-minute pickup zones, just signs in a bucket out there. And those are nice things when you have a big downtown and plenty of room to do it, but we only have, I think we have thirty-seven parking places downtown, thirty-seven, thirty-six. Uh, I mean, what we really have to train people to do and as, as we get busier and busier, it's gonna get worse. They're gonna have to start really using the municipal lots. That's why we've resurfaced them both this year and we built that new one on the railroad tracks just two years ago. In fact, that was a big, that, if you recall, that's a one-year, one dollar a year for eternity for, for Canadian Pacific. And they were really help, helpful in expediting that, because they, we were able to get that lot built before Streetscape started, which really helped us.
I agree with the lots. I think the concern is crossing state if you're traveling down Jefferson, especially.
Walking or driving?
Driving, especially traveling west. It's a tough.
I mean, the visibility is great, but it's not, it's not good in Washington either. If you're going west on Washington, you have to turn left. So, I mean, it's like a lot of stop signs. Prior rail is the same way. We talked about how dangerous it is, but if you just stop and then pull forward three feet, you can see perfectly fine.
Right.
And that's what we had to do.
Um, any other announcements?
I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Baselli and then also the board for your patience tonight. There's things that sometimes it's hard for me to understand, so I appreciate you walking through the jurisdictions and, and helping me really grapple, grapple that. Especially, I know it can get frustrating when I keep asking questions, but I'm just really trying to understand things. So thank you to everyone for your patience with me.
I think you're great.
Get that in a minute.
A thank you to our veteran. Wednesday is coming up on Monday, so thank you to all who have served. You already have some.
No, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback, so you continue.
No, I would thank you to all who have served and continue to do serve.
That being said, there's a dinner at the Hampshire Township, um, put together by.
Township what?
The Township Building.
Okay, ours Hampshire Township Park District, Hampshire Township.
The one on Mill Avenue over there that your wife works at? That one. So, so there's a dinner, there's a dinner over there on Monday night. Um, if there's anyone watching or will be watching and is interested in partaking or helping and volunteering or you know of a veteran that may enjoy going to have a meal, um, Ms. Stuhler has been in contact with Annie. Well, I remember Annie from the Garden Bear, from Rose Garden days, and, uh, so she's organizing this, so have them, have them contact, uh, Ms. Stuhler and you'll get them in contact.
And there will be a parade, a very short parade starting at utilities and the, the veterans will stand at the township office and then the parade will come by.
I think Copper Barrel is doing a free, maybe Sunday, doing a free meal for veterans too.
Okay.
It was in social.
So, um, the other thing, Saturday, there's, we're having our, uh, second annual pumpkin smash. We'd like to have a lot more numbers this year. So if you need a pumpkin to get rid of, or maybe you have some, uh, agitation or anger in your life you'd like to get out, bring out a pumpkin and you can throw it in the dumpster as hard as you can. That'll be, that'll be at Henbeck Park on Saturday.
And I would just like to thank Flood Brothers as well as Midwest Companies. Flood Brothers is gonna donate the roll-off and then Midwest Companies can a lot of shoes their scales so we can brag about how many, how many tons of pumpkins. Last time we had two tons. So.
Yeah, and, uh, so there's that.
Megan will be out there, rain or shine, with her home scale. Determine which is the biggest pumpkin.
So, uh, and then we have, we do have executive session on the agenda, but we're not gonna go to the executive session tonight. Uh, as you know, every, annually or twice annually, um, we go through executive session minutes for release. Um, it's kind of a tricky process, so we kind of, we do have a backlog of, of meeting minutes because of the village's situation with their, you know, uh, personnel and stuff like that over the years. Um, namely going through a new clerk and having, I'm not trying to make it seem like it's Karen's fault. It's not. She's trying to, she's, she's trying to pick up the pieces. And so we've got. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm seriously not, but I, I, I don't know how to say the, the old clerk, the old clerk is no longer with us. And there was a transition period and we know how rocky everything was and all this other stuff. So what I'm getting at is, is that we have to do this, we have to vote into executive session probably the first meeting in December, but there are a lot of minutes that can't leave the building and I don't think that it's physically a good idea for her to make a million copies for us to glance at for five seconds like we do and then throw them in the garbage or for her to have to shred. So what I'm saying is, is that if you want to make an appointment with Ms. Stuhler, she will be available for you guys to go in and look at the minutes before you see them for the first time in the executive. That's what I'm saying.
How are we gonna see them at executive if we're not gonna have a copy?
So if you remember, we asked them around the executive and go through them.
If you wanna see them prior to date, you can.
Whatever.
They're all minutes from executive session.
Correct. They're all, we were all here for.
I was here.
We were all here for, and so then if you remember, we sign off on it.
And if I remember right, it's just about whether to release or not.
Correct, so if you want to view them in depth and go through every line by line, your opportunity to do that would, do that before December, uh, fifth.
So executive session doesn't take two hours, but these minutes are very, very short. Most of them are two or three sentences.
Yeah.
So it's not very much. And the reason we didn't wanna do it tonight is because we do have some things that we probably won't wanna talk about in two weeks, some other things.
Well, I, I was gonna ask if there if there were executive sessions for things that may still be ongoing, are those minutes included in the discussion or are those exempt from?
We review and then make, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, we review and then make a determination of whether they're subject to release. So if there is an ongoing employment matter or this isn't, this is a good opportunity to say, if there's a real estate matter, we're gonna buy or sell real estate. That's, that's outside of that there. And we knew we were gonna buy another piece and that would affect the first piece, would affect the second piece, we would say no. Um, that these are not subject to release because they were, for the same reasons they were.
So we wouldn't have to move to release or not, we would say that's not subject.
I know municipalities that haven't released in years because all these things are still ongoing for one reason.
Okay.
Directly or indirectly.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty-eight, just like.
All for the veterans, for the, for the veterans in there, there's thirty, thirty-eight veterans.
Is that dinner open to veterans and their friends or just veterans?
Yeah, just. Yeah.
Isn't there also a, for announcements, uh, meat raffle coming up?
We were, she just, she just, go ahead. No, no, it's just she, she just reminded me.
Our Lions Club president.
Yeah, do you have anything that you'd like to add about an event that you might be having this weekend?
Yeah, just one.
Maybe we're gonna have one tomorrow. Yeah, it's, I believe at the, uh.
Copper Barrel.
And Hop House and Newman's, uh, the raffle, the meat raffle there. And I should know, but I don't remember the names of the families that the, uh. The proceeds from this is gonna be, go to two families. I can't remember the names of the families, but, um. Specifically, uh, that was what is gonna be dedicated to, so.
Four o'clock. So the Godeys and the Gody family and the Summers family.
Are the families in?
Yes, and they're, they're, they're local resident.
And so the Lions Club had decided that their, their meat raffle proceeds would go to, uh, those two families.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
One more announcement. Uh, if anyone has eaten at the Garden Berry, you probably realize that your receipt says something different now.
Yeah.
No, so the Garden Berry has, uh, changed hands and will now be, I think it's called Angels Pancake House.
Angels Pancake, something, huh?
And so you're gonna see some potential sign changes and I know he's been meeting with a member, uh, the, our head of BBC to get some.
Probably gonna be taking those back with science.
Those back with science most, maybe coming down. It's already changed hands.
It's a different family?
Yeah, actually, it's, it's a friend of the people who've owned it before. Uh, these, the guys had owned it before. He had two other restaurants and they're, one is in, uh, Hinsdale and one's in, uh.
Well, geez.
And this was just too far away from, they're friends of theirs. I've met the new owners. They've been, been over here and met with, uh, about the place greeting tags and, uh, they've also, they don't have any plans for gaming or, or, uh, liquor. Um, and.
I don't think they've changed any menus or anything.
They, they may extend their hours, but right now they don't have any plans to do that either. And there are other restaurants, same hours as these. So these are, this is another, another, uh. We'll have, there'll be some slight changes in the menu, a little more Mexican influence, I think.
How's Double R Dog doing?
I was in there today, as a matter of fact.
Will we back up, can they address?
It's gonna be double P, they're gonna change their name.
Have you been on the?
On the side of Garden Berry.
Side of Garden Berry, they still.
Yeah, I actually went over myself and zip tied those wires. That's, that's all I could do.
Okay. No, I think it's still, it's still, it's gonna catch.
It's not perfect, but it's better than.
Right.
So, uh, I was at Double R today. He's hoping that with, he was getting his hood inspected today and it's all done up real nice on the inside. And he's got, uh, furniture and all that stuff. And so he's hoping that, that he's going to be open at the end of November. That's what he's shooting for, assuming he has no more delays. But it seems like.
The real delay has been staffing. He had to wait for his food truck business to slow down so he could bring some of those employees inside.
What about the barber shop?
Uh, they said November, but.
They just got busy.
They said November, when I talked to the owners, when I see Dave all the time, because he works for Burlington Central School, so I see him everywhere I work all the time. But when I talked to Sue at the Ice Cream Social sock op situation that, uh, uh, the Storkin Society had, they wanted to do something in November.
And they're, they're already working on the facade.
Yeah, the inside kind of slowed down because, um, what was the name? Dave got, he was sick and then he had, he's had all kinds of health problems for about a year, but Sue was in there this week and she said, yeah, we're getting started now. And then he called me about an hour later and said, we don't have any water over here. I said, that's because you didn't pay your water for two months. And then I told your wife and she was here. Better pay it today because there's a. Better pay it today cuz there's a shut up notice on the window. And she went home and forgot to pay it. But then she called the next day and paid some rainwater.
Um I don't, this is an announcement for the whole board. I mean, I guess it is. So we have um the um. Annual meeting that the Liquor Commission holds uh to approve the yearly license will happen on December fifth. You should have gotten an email heading on the Liquor Commission. We didn't ask like we normally do if this is a good time because we this is the, we normally do the two meetings. In December, right? So that this way. We put deadline out there and so we can approve them for the year. Doesn't have their paperwork right. We'll meet the following uh Thursday or before Christmas. So just know that those two dates are tentatively scheduled for Liquor Commission just for the sole purpose of approving yearly license.
And I would just tell you that our village clerk is doing an amazing job of getting all that information. She's been taking packets to the businesses. For their convenience, um and I think you'll have. Ninety nine, if not a hundred percent of all the documents you need. They only have to meet once.
Anyway. Great job.
Thanks.
I well, you know, I took I took away and then he gave, you know, said good cop bad cop.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges.
He pulls you out from the second, from the back wheels.
That's what that's what he's saying. Good cop bad.